Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to all of you and the start of a new academic year 2024-2025. We will call this regular board meeting for Wednesday, August 7, 2024, to order at 4:31 PM. Role call, please, Melissa.
Director Benkis?
Here.
Director Carey?
Here.
Director Hayfley?
Here.
Director Jorgensen?
He is, he should be joining us pretty soon.
Director Malpakum?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Director Ott?
Here.
So we have six board members in attendance, and I expect Director Jorgensen to join us at any moment. Please join me as we observe a moment of silence. So the next item on the agenda is to amend the agenda. It is necessary to amend the agenda and move one non-action item to action. Director Hayfley, can you please make that motion, please?
In accordance with Section 3, Subsection J, "Approval of Agenda as Presented or Amended in the Board Operating Procedures Manual," which states, "Reordering items on the agenda requires approval of a single motion with a majority vote of the quorum present," I move that the Board of Education amends the agenda by moving Item H2, "Updated Resolution: Student Fees, Fines, and Charges for School Year 2024-2025," from non-action to action due to the need for schools to clearly communicate this information to students and families at the beginning of the school year.
Second.
Moved and seconded, so this item will move from H2 to G...G6. Okay, role call, please.
Director Benkis?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been amended. I will come to you, Director Ott. Can you please make the motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
I move that the Board of Education adopts the agenda as amended. The updated resolution for student fees, fines, and charges for school year 2024-2025 has been moved to the action agenda.
I need a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, role call, please.
Director Benkis?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the agenda has been adopted as amended. We do have executive session for roughly 16 minutes. Director Nelson, can you please make the motion to move into executive session?
I move that the Board of Education convenes into executive session to discuss legal advice per CRS 24-6-4024B, "Particular Matters Superintendent's Contract and Employee Leave of Absence." Negotiations per CRS 24-6-4024E, "Particular Matter Superintendent's Contract and Personnel" per CRS 24-6-4024F, "Particular Matters Superintendent's Evaluation, Superintendent's Contract, and Employee Leave of Absence."
Second.
Moved and seconded, role call, please.
Director Benkis?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Malpakum?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we will enter into executive session now and reconvene for the rest of our regular board meeting at approximately 5:30 PM. Thank you. I apologize for the late start out here. Okay, we are reconvening in public session, and there is no need to modify the agenda after executive session. For those of you who did not see the start of the meeting, the agenda was adopted with an amendment that was to move non-action item G2 to the action item agenda. And that was done to ensure that schools have the necessary support and structures in place for the beginning of the school year. With that, I want to welcome all of you, those present in the boardroom and those who are joining us remotely, to the beginning of the new year. Where did the summer go? I mean, it was just really fast out there. So hope all of you had a relaxing summer break with your friends and family, and you guys are recharged for the beginning of the new academic year. We didn't have the Palmer Marching Band.
We did.
We did, okay, okay. I do want to give a shout out to the Palmer Marching Band.[630.16][630.16](Applause). Okay, great, come up here, sir. Thank you, thank you for being here. Are any of your students up here, too? Yeah, you can come, come up to the microphone, here, right here.
Right here.
Are any of your students still here?
They are not, they are back working.
Okay, great, but thank you for bringing your students up here, a lot of energy, I'm sure. We missed it because we were downstairs, but I'm sure the audience enjoyed the performance out there. Do you want to share anything with us about your students and your program at Palmer?
Other than the fact that the, the program is going very well, we're always indebted and thankful to North Middle School. They let us house there for two weeks every summer, and with a lot of the rebuilds that have been going on, we're not only thankful to North Middle School, but also the facilities team. They have just made it very, they've made it work for us in a, in a space that they had a lot of deadlines to crunch, and they had a lot of things to do to get that building ready, and they still made it a viable space for us to rehearse. So really thankful to North, really thankful to the facilities, and then for having us out, thank you to you all, board, thank you, Michael Bell, and thank you, Ms. Burke, for all the support. Thanks so much.
And good job dodging the lightning bolts, excellent work.
Thanks, y'all.[711.12][711.12](Applause).
So thank you. Before we get into the agenda items for this evening, I do want to take a few minutes to address a topic that has garnered significant attention from our staff, parents, and students, and that is the cell phone policy, which will be implemented starting next week as students return to campuses. I just want to provide clarity, as the district has received several questions on this subject matter. First, the why. Last spring, the board met with all three of our employee groups to receive feedback on how best we can support our teachers and staff as we prioritize the delivery of high-quality instruction in every classroom. The overwhelming feedback we received was the detrimental influence of cell phones, influence of cell phones in classrooms, and the increasing complexities of issues our staff were dealing with on a daily basis, lack of student engagement, increasing behavior and safety issues, and more importantly, decreasing academic performance. If our vision is to be the premier educational institution in El Paso County and our shared destination is excellence in every single classroom, it was clear we, as a school board, had to address this issue with urgency. A task force comprised of board members, teachers, staff, parents, and students was assembled to solicit feedback based on the diverse, diverse community input through that task force and proven research data that has demonstrated that keeping cell phones out of classrooms promotes, promotes student engagement, increases academic performance, improves mental health, social engagement, and decreases behavior and bullying issue, bullying issues. The board unanimously, by a 7-0 vote, adopted the cell phone policy at the June 12 board meeting and tasked the superintendent to come up with a consistent and effective implementation plan. The superintendent and his administrative team recommended the purchase of Yonder pouches. First, a quick word on the financial aspect of this project, because there are conflict, all kinds of misinformation that is out there. The district invested a little over $300,000 from the general fund contingency funds for purchasing these pouches, which will come up for board approval later this evening. The board and administration, this board and administration has been very strategic in investing our dollars closest to students and classrooms, and that is part of this initiative. Over the past three years, we invested in our staff with competitive compensation, one of the highest starting teacher salary in the Pikes Peak region at a little over $50,000. We protected teaching positions this past budget cycle by tightening our spending at central admin, cut student fees in half this past year, and we are looking at eliminating all student fees next year. Invested in our CTE and educational program, including our study abroad program, as some of our students that later this evening are going to attest to, made significant capital investments, and you will see those capital investments as you return back to our campuses. New track and field in three of our high schools. We will continue to support our schools, students, and staff, and this $300,000 is an investment in the future of our students and staff. It is going to help with our staff retention as their job satisfaction will improve as well. So here is the plan on how this will be implemented in our schools, and Ms. Olson is going to help me, and I think Mr. Joyner, is he going to join us up front? Okay, so if, every middle and high school students, so Ms. Olson and Joyner are going to demonstrate this, thank you, Melissa. Every middle and high school students will be provided a Yonder pouch, a secure bag at no cost to the student. At the beginning of the school day, upon school entry, students turn off their phones and place it in the Yonder pouch and snap it shut. It's a simple process, snapping it shut, it locks. Students will maintain possession of their phones throughout the school day. As they exit the building for lunch, free periods, field trips, or at the end of the school day, there will be unlocking stations at strategic locations, and that's the unlocking station that Melissa is holding up there. And all you have to do is to tap the pouch across that unlocking device, and it unlocks. It's less than two seconds to unlock that device, unlock the pouch. District 11 will be the first school district to adopt, thank you, thank you both of you. District 11, thank you for playing Van Nuys. District 11 will be the first school district to adopt such a comprehensive cellphone implementation plan in El Paso County, but it has been used with much success around the nation and the world. According to the study conducted by Yonder, cellphone-free learning environment saw an 83% improvement in student engagement, 74% improvement in student behavior, and 65% improvement in academic performance. Obviously, when there is a change, there are several underlying questions from our parents, specific questions that may relate to their child, a child with a medical plan, a specific condition that is identified in their IEPs, which is the Individualized Educational Plan. Please contact your school administration, and they will work through those situations. Lockdown and emergencies at schools, every classroom is equipped with phones. School staff still have access to their phones, and they will execute the safety procedures. Students in those emergency situations should not be on their phones as it could potentially hinder safety protocols. Schools will contact parents in a timely manner through our communication tools. Encourage, I, this is an encouragement to parents to ensure that you sign up to receive the communication from your respective schools and the district also, so that when something like this happens, you will be informed. Home emergencies, plan changes, it happens. Parents, you can still contact the front office, you will still have access to your students through email, so when you call the main office, your call will be directed to at least five different school staff members. One of them should be able to assist you. So some of the feedback that I called the phone, school, that I'm not able to get to a person, it has been addressed out there. All other questions and scenarios on the cellphone, please refer to the cellphone policy page on the D11 website, okay? And those questions are being answered. So let me end by saying this, let me be clear. This board is taking a strong and clear stance on this issue for one reason, minimize distractions in the learning, learning environment, and maximize the learning potential of our students, and being responsive to the support our teachers wanted. This plan has overwhelming support from our teachers. Enforcement of this policy now does not fall on the teacher, allowing our teachers to teach and students to learn. This was not a rushed decision, it was well researched, input was sought from various stakeholders, backed by factual data, and now we have a complement, comprehensive implementation plan. The superintendent is committed to ensuring this plan is implemented with rigor and consistency, and the superintendent has this board's full support. Last thing, but for this plan to be effective and achieve the desired outcome, it would be beneficial to have parents as partners in this journey. When parents emphasize the benefits of this policy at home, it makes the job of our staff easier. Students are more likely to observe the protocols with parental support. The board, along with Superintendent Gall's team, will periodically monitor the data, adapt, and ensure we are accomplishing the end outcomes, and we will keep the community informed of the progress we make. Superintendent Gall will also address the changes to attendance and behavior policies in his report later this evening. Between the attendance behavior and the cellphone policies, these became, become the ABCs that we are going to lean on strongly this academic year to improve academic performance in our classrooms. Thank you for your patience, as I provided some details and clarified some information for the benefit of our community. And now, I'll get, get back to our regularly scheduled programming. Thank you. Okay, yeah, may I please have James Murphy, our student, lead us up here on the front in the pledge of allegiance?
(Clerk) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, James. And James said, when I was talking to him before, that he was nervous. I don't, I didn't see any nervousness at all out there. You did an amazing job. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it's awards and recognition. Superintendent Gall, I'm turning it over to you.
James, come back up again.[1360.01][1360.01](Laughter).[1361.01][1361.01](Applause).
Colorado Special Olympics Youth Activation Committee, YAC. James Murphy, a sophomore at Mitchell High School, applied for and earned a coveted seat on the Colorado Special Olympics Youth Activation Committee, the YAC. Colorado's Special Olympics Youth Activation Committee leads Unified Champion Schools and is made up of young leaders representing middle schools, high schools, and colleges statewide. A state YAC is a group of youth comprised of members with and without intellectual disabilities from across the state. Throughout the year, this group works together to educate, motivate, and activate youth to become agents of change in their communities and advocate for the respect, inclusion, and acceptance of all people regardless of abilities. Thank you to Amanda Wormers, Athletic and Activities Director at Mitchell High School, and Michelle Driling, Special Education Teacher and Unified Coach at Mitchell High School, who coordinated participation in this committee for James.
Awesome, can we get a round of applause?[1426.13][1426.13](Applause).
Amanda's come forward before, but I'd really like Michelle to come forward to and be recognized. James, you're a remarkable young man. What do you want to tell everybody where you go to school?
Mitchell High School.
Do you like it at Mitchell High School?
Yes.[1444.51][1444.51](Laughter).
Are there any two teachers at Mitchell High School that you think are particularly awesome?[1451.55][1451.55](Laughter). You want to show us who they are?
Ms. Driling and Ms. Wormers.
That's right, can you both please come forward? For those of you who don't know, and Chris Knoll, you're here as well, please kind of come forward as well. We, we started a program last year, Unified Sports, that went district-wide. James has challenged me a couple of times, and I've been running in the other direction because he's challenged me to the basketball court, and although I am taller than him, I've seen James play, and he's a much better shot. James had the chance to play at the Nuggets game, right? Do you remember how many points you scored that game?
Uh, not that many.[1492.01][1492.01](Laughter).
James is being very humble. He was the high scorer for District 11, and we won that game, and it was a halftime at a Nuggets game last February, I think it was, it was a pretty snowy day. But what we have here is we have an extension of adults who have moved heaven and earth to ensure that James and all that James represents is central to what we do in District 11. James is being awarded tonight with this recognition, what do we call it? What's, what's the name of the group again?
YAC.
YAC, right, everybody can remember that, which is our partnership with Colorado Springs' Special Olympics Colorado. And so that partnership is, we were the first district to go district-wide on Unified Sports. So now, instead of Special Olympics being something that happens after school or outside of school, Unified Sports is something that happens in school. And James, I think you've just been a remarkable spokesperson, and I'm excited that you're here, and we have Unified Track, are you on the Unified Track team?
Yes.
Yes. So I'm a better runner than I am a basketball player, so I'll, if you beat me in basketball, I'll beat you in Unified Track on the, on the new field.
I could beat you in a race anytime.[1565.13][1565.13](Laughter).
Thank you.[1567.13][1567.13](Applause).
Okay. Thank you, and congratulations, James. And I look forward to you beating him.[1590.01][1590.01](Laughter). The next item on the agenda, spotlight on international travel and the study abroad program. Superintendent Gall?
Yeah, I'm super excited to bring Claudette all the way from halfway around the world seven times, and then on six midnight flights just this last weekend, to be able to return our students with chaperones and safely. This is a hallmark of what makes District 11 different from other districts. This is this idea of a peak experience that we're trying to expand across the district. If you are in a third or fourth year of foreign language, we want to send you to a foreign country the summer in between either your sophomore and junior or junior and senior year, for you to be able to study that language within that culture. Now, we're doing that, and we're paying for that, because that's an extension of the learning environment. It is critical that our children get experiences outside the classroom. I am excited to have Claudette and many members of the team to be able to summarize that program, but this is one of the most exciting things that we do, and it's changing the way that we do everything in District 11. It won't be just for students that study foreign languages. How do we get kids out of the classroom into spaces where they can demonstrate their learning beyond just what the test score says? Claudette, to you.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Gall and Dr. Malpakum, Board of Education. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm super excited to share with you what happened this summer, which was absolutely amazing times 10. So I'm just going to give a brief little intro, and then I want to dedicate most of the short time that I have with you to students and parents who are here with me tonight from all three of our study abroad programs. So just real quickly, today we were at the arena over at Colorado College's staff, and I heard three words, experience, explore, and expose, and I really believe that those three words really represent what study abroad is about. All of these students that get to go and study abroad are experiencing what happens in their real world in their language and culture classroom, but outside of that classroom in an actual true environment. They get plenty of time to explore. As you'll see, they have, every afternoon and on the weekends that they're abroad, they have organized field trips, and they get to visit museums, they get to go to cooking classes, surf lessons in French, just lots and lots of different opportunities for them. And then, of course, just exposing them to the world beyond the classroom is something that a lot of students, and actually many of us as adults, don't even get to do. So just really quickly, I'm going to go through a couple of slides, and then I have a little, it's not Jeopardy this year, sorry, if you liked Jeopardy last year, it's a little bit of a different game, and you'll have a chance to interact with the students and the parents. And then also have a couple chaperones, and I'm here as well, too, to answer any of those game questions. So we had three programs actually grow this year, or go this year, so we have, we grew by one. Our University of Oaxaca and our Beritz Language School went as they did last summer, and you can see the dates up there. In fact, before I came up here to present to you today, I was starting to get in my inbox all of the transcripts from the University of Oaxaca group, so kids, your transcripts should be coming to you. And then we added this year a very unique program for our German students. We have two German programs in the district, one at Doherty and one at Palmer. We have two German programs in the district, one at Doherty and one at Palmer that are growing. We've now added German IB, German for a diploma program. That's brand new this year for Palmer. And we had five students between Doherty and Palmer go to Berlin for an entire month of learning. So 60 hours of classwork instruction, they did a homestay just like the other students did. They took a proficiency exam called the stamp before they went, and they took it right before they came back. So we should get those results pretty soon to see that growth. And let's see, I think we'll go on to the next. How does this work? The middle button?
No. Okay.
All right. Thank you. That'll help me a lot. This is an example of what the students receive. These were actually from last year. So you'll see the dates are from 2023, but the students receive an actual transcript from the language school or the university that has the hours of instruction. They can use this to apply for scholarships, jobs. We have a lot of now companies, organizations, and even school districts that are offering additional pay for those that are bilingual, belligerent. So again, this coursework is very valuable to them as they grow in their future. I don't know what the one from Berlin looks like. They just got back this weekend. So I'll get those and be able to show the world what that looks like too for our kids. So what do they have to do? Well, they need to show success in their language programming and really have a passion to continue with their language learning. So they go through a little application process, and I have a committee that looks at those. Two letters of recommendation, they have a couple of essay questions that they answer. They have to, of course, be able to obtain a passport in order to travel out of the country. And then, of course, the parents onboard, parents come to our pre-trip meetings. I'm in constant communication with them as well before, during, and after our experiences. And the data is showing that the students, while they're there, because it is an immersion experience, they're showing that increased language proficiency and not just not beyond that, but the cultural component as well. For some of the students that have participated in study abroad, it's their first trip on an airplane. So that's pretty cool. Odyssey students, because of how their programming is structured, they are required to have just the two years of language there, but our other schools have three years. Most of the kids have at least three years. And then we really encourage them to continue learning. I think this year we have all of the kids are continuing on to language but one. And so that's a really good turnout of, you know, developing that passion for them to to continue with their language learning. So where do we go? You can see Oaxaca is circled there in the south kind of section in the state of Oaxaca in Mexico. So it's an actual state in Mexico, but they go to the capital of Oaxaca. It's not near the beach. It looks like it is, but it's not. We require a couple hour bus ride over some pretty bumpy roads. So the kids stay right there in Oaxaca with the host families, and they attend the university, which is in the city center. And then Beritz is about 22 kilometers from the Spain border, and it's right on the coast there, very safe community, lots of language schools there. They're well known throughout the world. Lots of international students come. So our kids got to meet kids from like Switzerland and Belgium and Norway and Sweden and make friends from around the world as well. And then Berlin was the one that we added this year. The partner company that we worked with runs a very amazing program. They're very well organized. The kids again are in class every morning. They have field trips in the afternoons and on the weekends as well. So you're going to hear from some of them in a little bit too. That's just a list of the kids that participated this year. And then I want to now stop talking and allow time for you to interact with our kids and our parents. So what we're, what I think we're going to do this year is choose a language. So you notice I put the three languages at the top, and maybe we'll have time, I don't know how much time we're going to have, but at least you'll have at least one opportunity to pick a language and then pick a category, one of the categories that's listed in the box. And I did not prep them, so just keep that in mind. They were not prepped like a speech or anything like that. So this is very real, organic, and they're going to come up and just give a few words about that topic. And it may be me too, depending on what the topic is. And then we have a couple of our chaperones that went this summer to Oaxaca. All right.
Okay.
Yeah?
Let's.
All right.
Do you want to? Okay. We'll start with Vice President Taffley. Do you want to pick a language or topic?
German.
Okay. What's the topic?
Topic.
What I wish I could bring back.
All right. You guys are up.
What you wish you could bring back?
Tell everybody what your name is, what school you go to as well.
Speak to the microphone.
Repeat the question.
I would like to know what you wish you could bring back from Germany.
All right. My name is Link. I go to Palmer. I'm going to be a senior this year. Berlin was really fun. What I wish I could bring back is safe bike lanes. They have very, very nice bike lanes there. I was not able to bike there due to the program, but I wish I could. It's so flat there, not hilly like here.
So not the Autobahn, you want bike lanes?
Oh, no. Cars terrify me. Motorbikes are cool, but bikes are cool as well.
Okay. Awesome.
Hi, my name is Alex Sanchez. I go to Doherty, and I'm going to be a junior this year. What I wish I could bring back, probably the U and Espaun. It's a lot easier to travel that way.
Really? Cool.
Thank you. Jason, can you punch? Punch your button, Jason. Jason, can I turn your microphone?
It's already on.
Oh, it's on. Great.
Let's pick the French parent perspective.
Okay.
French parent perspective.
French parent. Okay.
Yada's Rumba.
The French parent. You know, Elliot spent a lot of time taking a lot of great pictures, telling us about all the things that he was doing. I was incredibly excited. I just feel like the experiential knowledge of a trip like this is so much more impactful than just sitting in a French class in America where we're not utilizing it. So we have since secured a friend who speaks French, and he's going to meet with her once a week so that he can continue progressing in his fluency. I've never seen him so excited. And so he's a pretty quiet guy. He had all sorts of things to say about this experience, and it changed him. So thank you.
Director Nelson.
I'll take Spanish and homestays.
Come on up.
Hello, my name is Christian Morrow. I'm going to be a senior at Coronado High School this year. My homestay was probably my favorite part of the entire trip. Don't get me wrong, I loved the excursions and all that. But her name was Ms. Curry. She was the sweetest lady ever, and she always helped us. The biggest thing was that she helped us to get an opportunity to speak fully in Spanish. And that's what we did at dinner. When we were talking about plans, we did it in Spanish. And she was always super supportive. If we didn't know something, she would help us out. But she always encouraged us to find our own way to find those things out because when you're learning a new language, you can't, you don't always know the exact vocabulary word for what you want to say. But she really helped encourage us, along with our teachers, to find our own ways to describe these things that we want to say and be able to communicate what we want in a different language.
Awesome.
Hello, I'm Evan Gustafson from Odyssey ECCO, and I went to, I had the home, I had the same homestay as Christian, so I essentially have the same things to say. But I just, I want to reiterate what he was saying about, you know, we, we always tried to speak it fully in Spanish, even if it wasn't necessarily correct or good Spanish. But she didn't mind our, our homestay. She was, she was very supportive about, like regardless of the quality of how we were speaking, she was very supportive no matter what and helped us like to understand what we were trying to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Taylor Morrison. I'm a senior at Coronado. Homestays were one of my favorite parts as well with the way that it's a different sort of immersion than the rest of the experience. You get a different perspective than the tour guides that you meet and the teachers because the homestay are just people living their lives and interacting with their families. It's a really neat way to experience that immersion. Our, my host mom, her name was Adela, and she was a really kind person, and she really helped us understand the concepts, or she helped me understand different concepts in action, which was really neat because you don't get that a lot. It also developed a different level of independence than I was really expecting, and it was really neat. It was a really neat experience.
Hi, my name is Anna. I'm going into my senior year at Palmer. My homestay, I think one of the things I'll remember most is that I remember talking to my host mom, and she always made sure that we were well fed, and I think that is like one of the most important things, I'll tell you. She fed us so much food, and it was all so amazing. I remember me and my friend actually got sick on the trip, which kind of sucked. But she came into our room like probably like 10 times to make sure we were okay. And I, yeah, she was super sweet. And I think the homestay was like one of the most important experiences. I know a lot of kids wanted to like go out and stuff, but it was nice to just be at home. And she always like wanted to play games with us, which was really cool. So we played like Uno, and we talked about it in Spanish. It was really cool. So, yeah.
Thank you for sharing.
Director Bankes.
France and what I learned the most about.
I'm Jackson. I'm a senior, going into my senior year at Palmer. And I would say the most I learned about is probably the culture and the people and understanding that, you know, that different aspect of another part of the world and being able to understand that, you know, kind of just seeing how everything runs, you understand how roads are very different there. That freaked me out, you know? How people, you know, aren't as, you know, here we have a very, you know, friendly aspect when you go to the store, when you go there, it's you go in, you go out. And just kind of learning about all the different people and being able to expand, you know, what you know about the language and kind of the aspect that they don't teach you in school, which is the, like the more slang terms and the easier way to do things and things like that. So.
The thing I learned the most about was probably the language. When I went over to France, there were quite a few tenses that I did not know that I learned in my, that I learned in my two weeks there. So I feel like I definitely learned a lot about the language. And as Jackson has previously mentioned, we learned a lot about the culture and the country itself. But I feel the ultimate, what we ultimately learned from the language was very helpful and will be very helpful to our futures while learning French.
I'm Aniston Charbonneau. I'll be a senior at Coronado, and I would say I learned the most about the culture. And I think once you visit a foreign country, you gain a completely new perspective, not just on the language, but about life in general. So, yeah, I had a really amazing time.
I'm a little surprised no one's gone for the combo of French food just to see if it lives up to the hype. I, I'm actually just, language aside, I would just love to hear about the teachers, just to hear if there's anything they're doing differently from what we're doing in D11.
Okay.
Any language?
Yeah.
Any language.
Any language. Well, maybe one from each of the group can come and talk about the teachers. Yeah, one from France, Germany, German.
Okay. I guess to reiterate, I was on the German program. I liked the schooling a lot. We only had about three hours of schooling per day, and then we had excursions afterwards. And the way that they did it is we would always have a lesson that would learn about a basic vocabulary set that would relate to the excursion that we were going on to, as well as giving us homework to talk to the German public, which is a little difficult because Germany is a very private country. And originally, they wanted us to record people, which was kind of a crime if you don't ask them. So they have privacy laws that we don't. And it was very difficult the first couple of weeks, but they were very accommodating and willing to be like, all right, as long as you write a written transcript or like a couple of notes about what they, what you learned. Because the most important thing was getting out and talking to the real people in the culture using the vocabulary that you learned, and that was also tied in with a particular excursion that we went on that particular day. One of my favorite excursions that we went on to was a concentration camp, which was very, very sad. This particular one we went to was Sachsenhausen, which was also later used as a Stasi prison camp. And we learned a lot, a lot of very, very useful words, but a lot of very sad words. And we also talked about the public, about what they thought about the Holocaust and what they thought about World War II and the aftermath with East and West Germany. And it was a very, very informative day. I learned a lot from my host mother in particular, and my uncle, he also lives in Germany because he worked in the military. And I had an opportunity to talk to his grandmother or his girlfriend's grandmother. And she was alive for World War II and when the Berlin Wall fell. And I learned very, very much that day. And I think integrating schooling with talking to real life Germans is very, very integral because it's not just learning German on a board or learning German by talking to a tour guide who knows English. It's talking to real Germans about Germany.
So my teacher was named Senor Luis. Great guy overall. He was super nice. He was very young. He was 24. And one of my favorite parts about his teaching, I believe actually Sophia and I, our president's daughter, shared the same teacher. One of our favorite parts of his teaching was how probably every other class, we got to go out and do something similar to who just spoke. We got to go to the markets. One of our first things we did during class was we, our task was to barter. So we got to go out to these Spanish markets, and we learned a lot of bartering slang. Because if you go up to a Spanish market and you talk in Spanish, but you do it like an American, they're going to give you the American prices. But if you go up very casually, knowing the phrases, and you learn how to barter, I saved a lot of money, actually. It's a, it's a very cheap country, but I mean, I got half off on these very touristy necklaces just by saying the simple phrase es lo menos, which is a very slang phrase for is that the lowest you'll do? And it worked a lot. So I appreciate how he got us out into the world. We got to use these things, and they were immediately successful.
I was a part of the German program as well. Our teacher was named Fabi. I loved his teaching because he was very casual about it. And I think something that was very different with his style of teaching versus the American style of teaching is that he spoke to us more like we were all just equals and we kind of, we're all learning the same thing instead of just like a teacher who was teaching like 20 to 30 kids in a room when there was, in reality, like 11 of us.
I went to Oaxaca, Mexico, and there were so many takeaways that I had about the like teaching styles. One of my favorites though was the class sizes were a lot smaller than here in the US. And I feel like that gives us more time to address each student and each person and the way that they learn and what helps them absorb things, which is really important to me as a dyslexic person. And I really struggle with the large class sizes, and I have to really fight for the things that I need. And when it's a smaller class size, there's more time for everybody, and there's more incentive to interact with your peers when there are fewer of them. I also loved the campus. It was a half-open, half-closed college, and we had time to go out and walk in the middle of our class time, and I really appreciated that.
I was on the French program, and we were all split into different classes based on our fluency level. So I was in a class with two other Americans, and the rest were Swiss. And something I really liked about that class is the teacher made sure that we were all talking to people in French. So whenever we were doing partner work, none of the Americans were partnered together because we would just speak in English. And so we were, we were always partnered with a Swiss person just because the only language we had in common was French. And
And that is, that is something I really liked, I really liked the ability to have to speak with someone who was at a similar level that I was. I remember specifically, there was one instance where we did a field trip and it was basically a scavenger hunt around the surrounding area. And I was, again, partnered with two other Swiss kids and it was, it was difficult because my French is, I am not fluent and nor were they, but just the amount that I learned from speaking in French with them, rather than just having to look at a board and take notes, was extraordinarily helpful.
Thank you. Director Art.
Well, I was going to ask all kinds of questions, but I feel like you've all covered so much of this, so I'll just ask if there's anyone else who would like to comment on what you'd wish to have been able to bring back or something maybe.
Is there anybody that hasn't approached the podium yet? Any students that haven't approached the podium?
How about we get a chaperone? Can we get a chaperone and maybe talk a little bit about the program? I know you're back there, I talked to you earlier.
Will and Romi, they are language coordinators for the district, they got to chaperone the group to Oaxaca, they're both bilingual, bilingual Spanish and Romi also French, so they were the ones that chaperoned this summer and they are going to be able to give you their perspective.
Hello, I'm Will Hayden, I'm the district language coordinator along with Rose Saliers. We went to Oaxaca with the kids. I think my overall takeaway was just the appreciation for you guys, for Mr. Gall, for supporting the trip, seeing the experiences that the kids had was amazing. And then to Claudette as well for organizing this. We were just talking about kind of the next steps and what preparing for next year looks like and I'm sure that's coming up quick already, so we understand that it was a lot of work on everyone's part and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I will end with the last, what I appreciate the most about this experience. If we can get a student perspective and a parent perspective on that, like what you appreciate the most about this experience?
Hi, my name's Anna, I went on the Oaxaca trip. I would say that, first of all, I appreciate just the overall general opportunity to go on this trip. Not many kids can say they've traveled to places like Oaxaca at this age. But I also appreciate the opportunity to bridge the gap between different cultures. I think it's crazy important to know how other parts of the world live and just something as simple, simple as like the plumbing systems in Mexico are not like ours are and the stuff that a lot of people don't know, so, yeah, thanks guys.
My name's Jennifer, I'm Taylor Morrison's mother and I, I just can't tell you how grateful we are, this is an opportunity I don't think we'd have ever been able to afford and that it was given to her. I don't think anything changes your open-mindedness, your perspective and your compassion like world travel. And I don't think anything, like you can take four or five years of a language and not be able to converse with it, you know? I, I, I know four phrases in Dutch and no one ever asks me if I'm married or how old I am, but I still know those phrases, but it does not help me when ordering coffee. And so I just, this was, was so joyous and so delightful and so expanding for her, I can't tell you what a great, wonderful thing it is and I hope it keeps going. Thank you.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Eric Gustafson, Evan's father, and I just want to say that from like a parent perspective, you know, you don't realize, you know, two weeks entirely different, let's just call it world, because that's honestly what it is, just having that opportunity that would never have been afforded to us, you know, being somewhere, you know, in, in the southeast, often forgotten about, you know, on, on, you know, the wrong side of the tracks, as it were, but that we're actually stepping up, showing that our students, you're just as important just because you live somewhere else. And that it's not just empty words, we hear a lot of that around this time of year and it will be for a long time, but the fact that, you know, that we're actually putting our, you know, the money where your mouths are, we actually, actually did it and came back after two weeks. And want to say thank you to Claudette, you know, thank you to, to Will and Romi, you know, sending, you know, sending my only child to, you know, for a whole other place and having him back without a scratch. You know, it's like, that's, that's not, that's not a small feat, so, so thank you all very much.
Mine is very quick, I would just like to say how incredible it is that this was a fully funded scholarship experience. I did not have to spend a penny to come on this truly life-changing experience and I feel like of any program I've ever experienced in D11, the fact of how life-changing this is and the fact that it was free except all the food I bought was just.
You did a good deal.
Yeah. It's, it's unbelievable, I'd just like to say thank you to the entire board for that opportunity.
I think I appreciate the fact that this was a scholarship as well. And then I also really appreciated the fact that it wasn't like learning in a classroom where everyone else is speaking English constantly and you just go home back to more English, it's more or less just, if you go out, you have to speak German because not everyone's going to understand what you're saying.
Hi, my name is Kay Sanchez, I'm Alex's mom and I wanted to thank the board for providing this opportunity for all the kids, it was truly amazing and I actually came to the United States from Germany not speaking English, so I know that it is just a vastly different experience going over there and actually having to talk versus learning it in a classroom and how different that is, so thank you very much for doing this with them.
So I'll just close this out, I don't think we have any other questions, but I just want to appreciate Claudette, this was just a, you know, a small idea a year or two ago and you can see it's continuing to grow. The idea that we have students that were studying for a month in Berlin and so I'm talking to all of us over 40 who remember that when we were in school, Berlin was not a place that Americans can go, how quickly our world changes and how static sometimes we as adults can look at it. But it is the future of our children that have the opportunity now to study in a Berlin that was completely inaccessible when I was in college. And so, thank you Claudette for what you and all the world language team are doing to be able to extend this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you, I appreciate all the students and parents taking some time and spending it with us this evening and sharing your experiences, truly life-changing experience for all of you, thank you for being here, thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Okay, if I could get Christian and Jackson to come forward, we're going to start off again like we do every one of our soup's reports, with students and a chance to shout out to their teachers of why they love them.
I have met a lot of, oh, sorry. Why, thank you. I've met a lot of great teachers in my time at D11, but my thank you by far has to go out to Mr. Brent Urban in the back there in the.
Come on up.
He started to miss in the red, but I think he, more than any teacher I've had the opportunity to go with in my language studies, truly exemplifies how we wanted to learn in Oaxaca. We, our final project every single year and for midterms, has been having a conversation with Mr. Urban in Spanish. And he truly exemplifies this talk-based, communication-based, truly person-based learning in every aspect of his classroom. Another one of our biggest projects is the KIVA project. KIVA is a program where Mr. Urban gives us the opportunity to research in Spanish a person in a Spanish-speaking country that is seeking a loan and once we present to him why we think that person should receive the loan, Mr. Urban, out of the kindness of his own heart, donates the money to this person. So I think Mr. Urban's just a great guy, he's also really nice, so just shout us again to Mr. Urban.
Hi everybody, again, I'm Jackson Keating, I'm a senior at Palmer and I wanted to shout out a teacher at Palmer named Keith Ferguson. Now Keith Ferguson, he does it all. He starts out, a lot of us get him as freshmen for US government history, but he also is a sponsor for student council, untie the fact that he co-teaches a class called Theory of Knowledge, which for those of you who don't know that is, it is one of the most rigorous IB courses you can take and the whole point of the course is, you theorize knowledge, you go in, you talk about what's going on in the world and you, and you just discuss about it and then you write some essays and, and he truly is very kind-hearted, he is always very sincere, he understands what it means to be a teacher and what it means to not just be there because you are getting, you know, because it's your job, but to be there to truly make an impact. He was the one who wrote my letter of recommendation and you know, you go and ask, however many teachers you have, however many people are in the building, who could offer that letter of recommendation and to have someone who speaks so highly of you when they don't, they don't have to. And being able to, you know, have you have an opportunity so you can do something like study abroad, isn't possible without teachers like him and without teachers who want to make an impact. And I know he isn't here tonight, but hopefully he hears this somewhat, but just wanted to shout out him, so thank you.
Okay, I'm going to go mobile, I normally sit here, but we're changing it up. I love the way we celebrate our staff, but this year we're going to incorporate student of the week celebrations and I have Preston Jones here, if you can stand up and turn around and let everybody see what an outstanding young man you are. Preston is one of our Mitchell Marauders. And you're going to be a senior this year, is that right? That's right, and he's maintaining a 3.5 GPA, he is participating in our aviation's pathways, he already has his drone certificate, so he can fly a drone. He just received an $11,000 scholarship from Falcon Aero Lab, I think Mr. Mark Hyatt's here, is he still here? Is he still here, I don't know if he left or not, sponsoring that. John, can you stand up as our aviation pathways program leader as well? And Preston says he wants to be an airline pilot, do you know what airline you want to fly for?
United Airlines.
Stan Adams. That's, that's a great answer, I happen to be classmates with the CEO, so as soon as you get your certificates, we'll get a resume up there and we'll get you on the chief pilot desk. Anything you want to share with anyone about what it means to be you today as the student of the week?
Keep on doing what you're doing.
That's awesome. Mom, dad, anything to share here?
I'm not going to stand, I just had surgery, sorry, I'm a little loopy here, but I just wanted to thank D11 for this opportunity for Preston. He was actually an opportunity to graduate a little bit early, but he decided to stay because of you coming to the school and speaking to him personally and he truly felt that, you know, you were invested in him and for a student, that goes a very, very long way. So we would just like to thank you and hopefully the program will grow and more students will have the same opportunities.
Thank you so much for that. And so Preston will be flying on Fridays, so on Fridays he'll be going out to Peyton to fly and I think you're also doing some partnership with the Tuskegee Airmen up in Centennial, is that right? Right, awesome. So here's my coin for you, when you become a pilot, you'll understand the importance of those coins. Thanks, thanks a lot. All right, now I'll make some other people stand up, we have some new leaders that we had approved at the end of last year, but we didn't get a chance to recognize them, so if Michael Anderson, Ashlyn Smith and Christina Clayton, please come forward, introduce yourself to the board and the community, what school you'll be leading.
Sorry, microphones are a problem, I have a very raucous voice. My name is Christina Clayton, I am leading the Saban Saints and I am thrilled to be back in District 11. I was here for 10 years, I took hiatus for a couple, eight years or so, but I am back and I am thrilled and we are ready to rocket at Saban, so thank you very much.
Awesome.
Hi everyone, I'm Ashlyn Smith, I am at Monroe Elementary, we are the Mustangs. So excited to be there, I actually have a very similar story, I was a teacher in District 11 for about 10 years and went out of district and then was welcomed back and it is amazing. This is my third year back, but I just am so grateful for the opportunity and I'm excited for Monroe and for everything that we have going and we're headed in the right direction and we're just very excited, so thank you and I appreciate all of you very much.
Good evening, Michael Anderson, I am the new principal of West Pre-K 8, home of the Wolves and the Warriors. As somebody who was a teacher in D11 at Galileo and Jack Swigert and an administrator at Jenkins, I left the district to go to Ecuador for the last two years and in two years, the changes that have happened in this district is a level of support, then you can feel it. The, the energy that we've felt these last few weeks is, is second to none and so big time shout out to the entire human, what do we call it, talent management team and everything that, all the changes that have happened with Brandon Comfort and his team. As somebody who has been in the school for the last few weeks, kind of by myself, the district response to the support that I've needed has been awesome, so thank you very much, it's an absolute honor to have the privilege to serve at West and looking forward to everybody coming out on October 11th for our 100th anniversary in the heart of Old Colorado City. Thank you.
It's been so much fun to be back these last two weeks and constantly people are saying, did you have a great summer? If you've been in our buildings, Brandon, if you and the Capitol team can come forward and take over the slides here, a lot of us did not have much of a summer. The amount of work that's happening in your schools on behalf of the money that the Board of Education has prioritized to continue to invest and improve our schools is real and it's incredibly exciting. Brandon?
Good afternoon, board, welcome back. It has been a big year for Capitol programs and might be the biggest ever. A traditional Capitol programs caseload for the summer runs between 30 to 35 projects. Last summer, we pushed it hard and we did over 50 projects. This year, we will cross 100 projects by the time school starts. And so that only happens, so a little bit of gratitude, that only happens with a few things. Number one, thanks to the board and the community for the allocation of resources that Superintendent Gall just spoke about. A big shout out to our principals, we're no longer a district where we only do projects for the two weeks that nobody's in the building and nobody notices anything. We now have to have real relationships with principals because we're there when kids are getting ready to leave and we're there when kids are coming back. So I'm very grateful to schools, to our facilities team because they come in and support us. We have some great contracting partners, you're going to hear from a few of them today. But most importantly, I do want to share and thank the Capitol Programs team, Ms. Hoteling, I don't know if she's behind me or not, but her team is here today, they may look very tired, that's because they have been going all day, every day, weekends included for months, all on the behalf of, of students and schools. And so super excited to share some of the updates with you today. Okay, usually you know that we like to present things by region, we love the regional model, but because there are specific allocations for specific projects, we did bucket them by project type this year. And so one of the big project scopes that is currently happening or has happened and will continue to happen is restroom renovations. You'll see right now we're in the middle or just completing six restroom renovations at, at six middle schools. I didn't show any before pictures because the after pictures speak for themselves, right? What you'll see, modern, safe, clean facilities for our students. I've got to go visit many of these and they are nothing short of remarkable. In fact, we were at Holmes last week reviewing the project and walking through and Principal Carr said, imagine if the rest of my school looked like this. And so just incredible things, we're really excited for the experience that that provides our students. Front entrances, another, if the board remembers, a fun balance initiative, so secure entrances. We showed a few before examples up there at Carver and Jackson and then you'll see some after, again, what you see, modern, sleek, clean, most importantly, safe entrances. And so we have done a number of those this summer, we will continue to do a number of those over the next couple of years and we've heard some really great feedback from our schools. HVAC, we continue to close the list on schools that need HVAC. All right, so you'll see a Jenkins HVAC remodel up there, you'll see a Queen Palmer project, so Queen Palmer is now air-conditioned through a variety of methods and you'll see probably the largest. And you'll see probably the largest scale project and maybe one of the most complex at Halbert. That's a geothermal HVAC project. So if you drove on 30th Street by Garden of the Gods, you saw what looked like a war zone most of the summer. Big giant holes in the ground, 40 people on the roof. It was a massive project and it's still finishing up. And so some really great progress on, again, getting safe, comfortable spaces for our kids and teachers. Then a few other kind of miscellaneous future centers, as you know, are in full display. You'll see Coronado down there on the bottom left. We had an HGTV moment this summer. If you remember HGTV in its highest, the greatest moment of any show is when they pulled the terrible ugly carpet and underneath they saw the amazing wood floors. And so at Coronado, we had been talking the entire time about adding windows and glass and getting more light. And there were some budget constraints with that. And so wouldn't you believe it? We tore down a wall and we found immaculate, beautiful glass leading into their other open spaces. And so it was just an amazing moment. It was like, is this really happening? But you'll see there, again, at many of our high school sites, that they're getting those future centers as well. Some really cool CTE projects, culinary spaces at a variety of sites, as well as a Farm Box Initiative that's happening at Roy J. You'll see some really cool murals there, top left, at Rogers Elementary, aligning with their dual-language immersion program. And then you'll see the Martinez mural there that, again, connects them to arts integration. And then some continued playground enhancements across the district. And then finally, oh, it did autoplay. I didn't know if it was gonna do that. It was a really big summer for Mitchell. Okay, so wanna go through a few projects? You'll see the video flyby there. That doesn't look real. That looks fake. So to prove to you that it is real and that happened, you see a picture there of kids on the Marauder M enjoying their very first practice. That was earlier this week. If you've been at Mitchell, you'll also see they have a freshly painted gym. It looks incredible. In addition to that, a future center renovation, locker room renovations, as well as the continued renovation of the courtyards. One of the coolest pictures of the year, I should've put it up here, was Ms. Hoteling sending me a picture of a giant crane lifting a skid steer over the school to drop it into the courtyard because that was the only way to make that happen. And so there's nothing that stops our Capitol Program team from accomplishing what they need to accomplish. And so wanted to, again, celebrate all of the wonderful things that are happening across our district, especially some of the wonderful things at Mitchell. Now three of our four comprehensive high schools have beautiful, new, modern track and field surfaces. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hoteling. Like I said, we are joined by a few of our project partners today. She's gonna celebrate some of those partnerships briefly and then we'll open it up to the Board for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Comfort. Thank you, members and directors of the Board and Superintendent Gall. Without your vision and your opportunity for the Capitol Program to make some changes that are impactful to students, we wouldn't be where we are today. So we're doing great things all across the district and it's just really wonderful. I think my favorite picture is the students on the field at Mitchell in their first practice. Happened the day that the certificate of occupancy was signed. So it was amazing. We are joined by not just our district partners. Our principals have been amazing. All of the support teams have been amazing for the team this year. But our construction teams and the subcontractor and contractor teams across the state have been amazing in supporting D11 this year. We've got $100,000 in savings of diverted costs through some support for mechanical information that helped make the right choices for engineering and problem solving at Jenkins, Halbert, and now it's escaping me, sorry, and Coronado. Or no, Queen Palmer, sorry. This summer, we've got some, over $400,000 that we've had reimbursed from emergency relief from FEMA and from the state of Colorado for lead testing in the water, which we've just finished repiping Chapita. So we've done some amazing work there as well. And then just the partners that we've had around and with us throughout this summer have donated time and materials above $100,000 worth to making D11 projects even better. A lot of the times without even asking. They just go above and beyond, changing out fences, adding more paint to something, making something more functional. I mean, it just, there are so many things, it's hard to list them all. And a couple of those partners are here today that have been providing us with that extra support. And we wanna recognize them. I'll give you the quick list. And again, Halbert, if you did get the chance to drive by it and you could find the building underneath all the contractors, we've probably had, I would estimate, more than 300 skilled tradesmen working in D11 over the summer, just doing amazing things. So Flint Co., Elder Construction is here with us tonight. Adolphson and Peterson, Non Construction. Monarch Office Gapes has delivered furniture all over the district. Olson Encore Electric Field Turf, they're responsible for Mitchell, Coronado, and Dority's turf replacements. Performance Recreation, Fast Signs. Tech Painting, there's just too many to list. Bridgers and Paxton, the list goes on and on and on. RTA Architects. So we just have, we've just had a great, great summer with great partners. The same sense that you feel with the schools getting the support that they deserve, we're getting the support from the community as well. So it's been just a really great summer. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Tony with Adolphson and Peterson to talk a little bit about how they're supporting D11.
Thank you, Jen, and thanks for this opportunity. We've had a really successful summer and it's something that we've heard over and over again tonight is partnerships and relationships. And I think it's just a culture that we've been exposed to here and we really appreciated it. So part of the reason that our jobs have gone so well is that you have a really amazing project management staff. And we're just a small portion of what they've done this summer, eight projects out of the hundreds. But our projects, they've been very responsive, very detailed, and very supportive. And I think that's what kind of defines our partnership, is we're trying to support each other. And that goes with your purchasing department, too. They've been on top of it if we need stuff procured. So Jen asked a little bit about how we're supporting. And I think the way I put it is just, we're trying to be a good partner and trying to support D11's mission. And I think that, a lot of that starts with that culture that we talked about. And it's been kind of drilled down into us that we're supporting the students, supporting the staff as customers. And so some of those things are just, if we need to get in the schools and the staff is kind of trying to finish all of their summer, close out stuff with their students, we've helped them pack up and move their stuff out, which is just not typical. And same thing now, is everyone's trying to get back into the school. The last thing they wanna do is move furniture around, so we've helped with that. And then we've heard Superintendent Gall's call for supporting students in terms of offering them internships. So we've been working with your internship coordinator and trying to place some students with us. And so it's been great, it's a great partnership and I appreciate the opportunity to let us improve our community. Now, first, I forgot to introduce, I've got Garrett and John Berglin here. Garrett's been managing the budget and we're on track, so that's good news. John Berglin's one of our superintendents. He's also a D11 parent. So thank you for letting us improve our community.
Thank you.
Another great partner that's been working with D11 for, I think it was 30 years, Non Construction. If we can have them, Andrea, come up and share a few words.
Thanks, Jen, for inviting us. Superintendent Gall, Board. Yeah, Non Construction's been headquartered in Colorado Springs for over 40 years now. And 30 of those, we've worked together as partners with D11 on more than 20 projects over those years. And some of the more notable ones in the recent future were the big renovation at Adams, maybe five years ago. And then a couple of years ago, got to know Tony Carr through a pro bono project we did to put a de-escalation room and change the furniture and change the environment in one of the sped classrooms at Holmes. Seeing Tony and visiting Holmes to see the progress at one of the restroom sites. It's great to see an old friend and to hear from him and understand that it's not toilets and sinks. It's an environment that's giving dignity to the students and is creating a more safe and, you know, safe facilities that's gonna, that's gonna impact them. And I'm excited to see, working with Tony and the communications team, what the survey results come back and feelings of a healthy environment to hit the basic needs so they can focus on learning in the classroom and not what's gonna happen between classes. So it's an honor to work with you all. Thank you for your partnership and your trust. Things will be open and functioning and working in time for school next week when the students come back. And kudos to your team and they've been great because this was an 11th hour as our funding. Didn't know if we could make it happen and pulling out the stops to make it happen. So great use of things that might not have come to be. And we're here for questions. Eric Bivins from our pre-construction team, D11 parent. Beau Kelly from Non, D11 grad. So thanks for having us, guys.
I think we turn it over to the Board for questions.
Are you done with your superintendent's report?
No, I have more, but this is them.
Okay, great. Okay, any questions on the Capitol projects?
Dr. Mankas.
Yes, I wanted to ask, you mentioned about the piping for cleaner water. Is that done in all of our schools now? Are we still working our way through the list?
The testing is done in all of our schools, so they are mitigated to the state requirements. There's a couple that we're watching and we'll continue going with repiping where we need to. Chapita was the most urgent, so it's finished.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Nelson.
How many schools still need HVAC?
We still have partially air-conditioned spaces.
She said, "Oh, boy," for those who couldn't hear.
West campus still is partially air-conditioned. Coronado still needs air conditioning. Galileo, and then I believe Wausen Campus.
Okay, well, we're getting it.
And Palmer. Well, and Palmer, yes. That's taken.
So some sections of some of the schools have it, but not fully.
Yes.
The good news is all our elementary schools, and it'll only be 75 on Monday, but all our elementary schools will be fully air-conditioned by the start of school, which is a huge accomplishment for where we were just a couple of years ago. We've done, what, four or five schools in the last couple of years? It's been pretty much two a year.
Yep.
Well, I am excited to see some of the bathroom renovations and kudos to the team for thinking about, how can we use this as our funding and getting the approval from the state to use it in this way? Because that was a new idea that they had not come across. So D11's being so innovative and I'm just, I'm so pleased to see all the work that you guys are doing and really thank you for all of your hard work. And it's for the students and they're not here to say thank you, so we're saying thank you on their behalf. And just the bathroom renovations. I was traveling across the country like eight months ago and was in a rest stop in Nebraska and it was the nicest bathroom. And I wanted to take a picture to show the team, like, this is what we should do for our schools. But I thought the ladies might be a little weirded out if I started taking pictures in the bathroom.
Now people will wanna take pictures of our restrooms. We won't let them, we won't let them, but they'll watch.
Because we have the pouches now, so we don't have to worry. But just very exciting that this will be a place for our students to feel more comfortable. And I'm sure we will see that levels of safety and comfort in our schools, it's gonna improve. So, thanks.
So thank you. Thank you for all the work that you guys put in, even though the students are not there and some of our staff take the summer off. The work doesn't stop and you guys are doing an amazing job out there and that's going to be visible for our community when they return back to our campuses next week. Thank you.
Okay, I've got just a few more items. I'll go through them pretty quickly.
Thank you also for all the partners who were here and you commend all your work with the district.
Just to wrap up the Capitol piece, I wanna thank and acknowledge the staff who came back to buildings that aren't ready yet. Our first measure is being ready for students. That's Monday. And in the 11th hour, there is still one more hour. So I do appreciate the patience of staff. It can be frustrating to come in and, you know, you're thinking about getting your own classroom ready, that we aren't quite all the way there yet. We have such limited time. We appreciate your patience. We will try and backwards map next year to be done for when teachers return to buildings and make that the measure to make sure our teachers are feeling that respect. Okay, let's see, will my slides advance? Yes, they will. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on this because President Mel Packham let off, but the ABCs, the integrity of the learning environment. I just want the community to hear that the goal this year is to get a single truth of data, make sure our parent communications are tight, and not make this the teacher's responsibility. We asked our Board of Education for policies that were clearer on the expectation. The team has spent all summer engaging with teacher, with parent, with administrator, with students to be able to get standard operating procedures in place that we are ready to start school with real attention on attendance behavior and cell phones not being distractions in the classroom. Real briefly, we have key performance indicators for each one. Here on attendance, I just wanna highlight for folks, you don't know this because you don't pay attention to state reporting all the time, but last year we reported over 40% of our students chronically absent to the state. That means over 9,000 children missed at least 18 school days last year. So if you're questioning why it is hard to get more than 50% of your students at state-level testing, it's if you miss 18 days or more of the year, how can you reach that learning objective? So please, parents, be our partners, ruffle the feathers, get your kids to school. If you need help, if there's a transportation obstacle or you need some other accommodation, let your principal know and we will work to make sure that your student gets the learning. We have supports that the schools will have as well. We have an entire student engagement team that has the strategies to help overcome this. But we will be measuring attendance, starting the first day of school, and we will be reporting it and bring that regularly to the Board. For behavior, I love when our students enjoy our schools, but our schools are learned institutions first. They are not social experiments or experiences. What I want kids in school for is to learn. If you have a challenge and you need supports, we, again, have those ready for you and our student engagement team and in our deans and our counselors onsite. Please come forward and identify what challenges you're having so we can get you those supports instead of the revolving door of teacher to administrator and back and forth up and down the hallway. We want you butts in seats to be able to learn. It's critical in the partnership of our business is teaching and learning. We have it, we have teachers that are teaching and when we don't have students who are ready to learn, then the teaching is ineffective. It is a two-way partnership. And again, we need parents, we need your pledge to make sure that your students are ready for this. And finally, on the cell phones, I know there is a lot of concern out there. I promise you, it's just 15 to 20 years ago that we did this without cell phones. We can all remember, every one of us as a parent went through an experience without a computer in our hand. Remember, 90% of the apps that are on your child's phone are somebody trying to make business off of your child. Our business is teaching and learning. Give us the chance to do our business first and then we hope that your child can enjoy all the things that come with the access to the internet after that time. Please be our partners. We will be measuring it. In conclusion, I just wanna explain all the kites up front. We had a tremendous kickoff welcoming all our teachers back today at Robeson Arena. We are treating our teachers and our staff with the same level of respect that we gave our parents and our students at graduation. Fully air-conditioned, world-class facility. All the high school clusters came through today. And we asked the very basic question, how can you help us bring more experiences to your students' life? You heard it today as an example with our study abroad. How do we do that beyond just foreign language? And so every one of these kites is a collection of how it is that our elementary, middle, and high school teachers and leaders wrote down examples of how we can do more exposure, more exploration, and more experience to bring the learning to life. The goal is not the test score. The goal is for our children to matriculate into our local and our global economy and be citizens that we are proud to serve with. So with that, I conclude my superintendent's report at a world record three and a half hours. But it was a great summer.
It's not been that long. Sometimes it feels like that. Thank you, Superintendent Gall, and thank you for your team, also for all the collective effort that you guys put together. I know that several Board Directors were there at some school events and district events over the past district events over the past week or so. The energy and the momentum we are feeling in all these events is incredible, so you guys put together a, a comprehensive plan, um, and executed it, uh, very effectively over the past three days. Any questions or feedback to Superintendent Gall on his report? Okay, seeing none, moving on. Public comments, Ms. Olson, yes. Okay, we do have a few public comments here. So the first board meeting of the year, as a reminder, going over the board protocol for public comments. The bo, the board welcomes and is very interested in listening to community feedback as it helps us better do our job. Please approach the tires when your name is called. You have three minutes to deliver your remarks, please monitor the clock that is on display and complete your comments and allot a time. Board meetings are primarily business meetings for the orderly and efficient conduct of the business of the district. Keeping that in mind, the clear expectation is that your feedback is provided in a civil, professional, and courteous manner without resorting to disparaging or defamatory remarks. Students are often in attendance or watching our broadcast. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes minor students, including no use of profanities or obscenities. In order to, in order to accomplish the work already, already on the board agenda, the board will not respond to comments, but rest assured, your comments will be taken into consideration as we discuss pertinent agenda items. To also maintain the flow of the meeting and not have prolonged interruptions, please refrain from clapping. If you want to show support or solidarity to a speaker, please stand as the speaker is talking or use a silent applause. Lastly, the statements made by the public do not reflect the views of the board or the district. With that, first I have a student comment, uh, so this is by Michelangelo Krusen.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Michelangelo Krusen and I'm soon to be a junior at Palmer High School. Removing student access to phones during class isn't a bad thing. I, was I not supposed to start yet? Oh. Uh, removing student access to phones during class isn't a bad thing. I'd argue that implemented correctly, it can be very helpful for attentiveness and student engagement. I'd like to stress the implemented correctly part of that sentence. The proposed policy, JICJ, nicknamed the cellphone policy, is, I believe, not the correct way to manage student cellphone use. As it removes access to phones during all hours of the day, including passing periods for lunch, lunch and free hours, I am aware, students could go unlock their phones at lunch, but lunch is about 40 minutes and Palmer High School alone has about three, 1,300 students. Logistically, it's not feasible to stand in line to unlock phones and then eat for every student. There just isn't enough time. I did the math. Earlier in this meeting, it was mentioned that it takes about two sec, seconds to unlock a phone, phone. So 30 a minute, that times 1,300 adds up to well over 40 minutes. The, proving that there is not enough time. I hate how horrible of a distraction phones would be, come, especially in classrooms, but they're also a much-needed tool both inside and out of classrooms. I will admit right now on this podium, and you can quote me, phones are a major distraction in the classroom and teachers need a standard way to manage that, but students need access to their phones outside of the classroom. It was also mentioned that part of high school, school was teaching students to be adults and part of that lesson is responsible technology use. Banning phones outright does not teach responsible use. Repercussions for irresponsible use does. I have fully read policy JICJ and I'd like everyone in this room and watching online to know that it's banning use of all devices. As it is worded in the policy, PTD, standing for personal technology devices, to quote directly from paragraph three of JICJ, "For purposes of this policy, personal technology devices, PTD, includes any privately owned portable technology device, including, but not element two, cellphones, pagers, tablets, laptops, cameras, smartwatches, audio and/or video recording devices, devices and players, and any other handheld electronic communication and data storage devices not issued by the district. All student access to the outside world will be monitored by someone in the district. Any child reporting that they are be, being bullied will run through the district. A teacher breaking the rules and a student saying something or recording it will run through the district. Any complaints about the district will run through the district. I cannot be the only one that feels uncomfortable with all my means of communication running through the school, school, and I can't see the only one, I can't be the only one who sees an issue with a total control of information entering or exiting our schools. I'd like to ask you to recomp, reconsider policy JICJ. There are many people in this room, watching this stream or outside that are angry about this for dozens of reasons, and once school is in full swing, you will realize these reasons. I thank you for giving me the chance to speak and I urge you to think this through over the next few days in the coming school year. Thank you, Board."
Thank you. Another student comment, next, Rachel Schultz, uh, Rachel Schulze, I'm not sure. Yeah, please come and introduce yourself, so I got your name right. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel Schultz and I go to Coronado High School and I'm here to talk about the Yonder Pouches. So, um, one subject that's very hard to talk about is school shootings, but it's very real. And when it does happen, I want to be, when and if it does happen, I want to be able to have communication with both my parents and my siblings. And I feel that if we are taking away the phones, then I am not going to be able to communicate with my parents and I am relying on the school to hand out all the information that is happening, but I want to be able to tell my parents the personal experience that's going on, even though in a shooting, it can be very distracting and it can make noise. It can also really help and support the comfort of the student, knowing that they can talk to their parents and they can let them know. And they say that they will unlock the phones after, um, they will unlock the phones after the event is over, but a lot of times deaths do happen and the student did not get their chance to text their loved one, their last text, because their phone was locked up and they could not tell anybody about their situation. And we just need to be able to communicate with anybody if something does happen, because last year at Coronado High School, we did have a lockdown for a period of time, nothing happened, but if something did happen, I would want to be able to communicate with my parents about that. And if the phone was locked up, I would not be able to say anything. And while a phone is very, very distracting, it's also a form of communication, because the world has changed a lot. In the 1990, 1999 through, through 2000, there was only about five school shootings, but in the 2023 to 2024 school shoot, school year, there was about 20 school shootings. So, school shootings has went up tremendously, which means it's a lot more likely for it to happen. In a UCCS last year, there was a school shooting in Colorado Springs. So what are the chances that it would happen to you? So I just urge that we would change the policy and make it so when there is a shooting, we will be able to unlock the phones in one way or another, or if there is something, if there is a event that is going on that, that students need to communicate with their parents, whether it's a school shooting, or they just need to communicate with their parents because of a fight or a bullying issue, they just want to be able to communicate with their parents now and not have to wait. So I just urge you guys to change the policy, so if an event does happen, they can unlock their phones and they don't have to wait until the event is over.
Thank you. So we are done with student comments, these are community, community member comments. The first one is Mr. Brian Krusen.
Dr. Mel, good to see you again. It's always great to, to come up here. Superintendent Gall, thank you, thank you very, very much. I was worried that somebody wasn't going to pull out the, "That's not the way we did it growing up" fence, but you did not disappoint. My name is Brian Krusen. Mikey's my kid. I can't do eloquence in three minutes, I'm sorry. I tried, I tried writing it down, couldn't get, get it to work. All I know is, I agree completely with the data that you presented. Even though it's data presented by Yonder, I still agree with it. Cell phones in classrooms are a distraction. Students do better without cell phones in classrooms. I'm not talking about having cell phones in classrooms anymore. I'm talking about, the reason these cell phones are even owned by these kids is because the parents bought them the phones. The parents bought them the phones to be in communication with their kids. You say you have overwhelming support for this policy. Is it here? Did it show up today to say that this policy is great? Now, don't get me wrong, I just feel like I've been sold a bad bill of goods, because I want classrooms to not have cell phones, but don't make a kid go seven hours without his phone. Could you do it? Could you put a phone in a Yonder pouch, leave it at home for seven hours and not touch it? I doubt it. When I broke my phone, I was crawling up the wall till I could get it replaced. And I'm a grown adult who works in telecommunications. I do believe they should be banned in classrooms, I do. There are people out there who have provided counterpoint on this. There's, there's, um, allow me to compose myself, I'm sorry. Larry Rosen, um, research psychologist at California State University, probably knows more about how people tick than any of us do here. He has studied this as well. The reason people check their phones is to alleviate anxiety. If you don't believe me, break your phone, see how anxious you get. Going without the phone for seven, eight hours will allow that anxiety to build up in these kids. Do not tell me you care about the mental health of these children if you are not talking about their anxiety levels. You know what helps? Letting them check their phones for a few minutes every hour. What a coincidence, that's how long the passing periods are. I'm glad I got the numbers right. I estimated $220,000 to $330,000 per year for the Yonder Pouches. It's not a sale, it's a lease, correct? Thank you for letting me speak. Spend the money somewhere else. Let the kids have their phones between periods.
Thank you. Ms. Lynn Chesla, Lynn Chesla, O'Shea, okay, thank you. Joseph Boyle, Mr. Joseph Boyle.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent Gall. I just want to say, uh, I'd love to wish, uh, a very successful 24, 25 school year to every student, teacher, parent, and family in District 11. And I also want to thank the Board for addressing the very important issue of cell phones in the classroom, given that cell phones are indisputably a distraction in the learning environment and are clearly detrimental to academic achievement. Now, I'm hearing that the plan as presented may not be perfect in all details, but I'm confident that any legitimate concerns about the implementation can be addressed without detracting from this crucially important measure taken to improve student achievement. So thank you, Board, for taking this step and, uh, thank you for your concern for student achievement and, and, uh, doing what's necessary to improve that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Gall, President Mel Pakem, thank you for giving me the opportunity to I didn't write a speech because what I have to share with you tonight is about the cellphone policy. I thank you. It's been a long time in coming. I have been in the classroom and I've had so many challenges with cell phones that students would bring into the classroom. I would spend five to 10 minutes almost constantly dealing with a debate about why the student wanted to keep their cellphone. I'm trying to instruct in the classroom, I'm trying to get them to do their assignments, and they're not doing them. They have their heads bowed down and they're looking at their cell phones. This is the challenge that I faced when I was in the classroom teaching students, and it was in high school. Granted, the all classrooms, all offices in the schools have telephones. If a student needs to call their parent because there's an emergency, the phones in the classrooms are available if the student can explain to the teacher why they need to call home. And it could be a one-minute conversation with the parent if that's the case. Um, also, in the offices, we have security in the buildings. They have their walkie-talkies, they have their phones. If there's an emergency, security is called. They take care of those situations. But teaching in the classroom, I had to call security to come because the student would not give me their phone while I was instructing in the classroom, and I had to remove the cellphone from the classroom. And security would take it to the office and the parent had to come the next day to pick up the phone. That was how it was done at Palmer High School where I worked. Yes, there may be situations where students will need to use the phone and I understand that. But when teaching in the classroom, it is difficult and you waste your time trying to instruct and you don't have, the student won't give you that time, they won't give you the time of day. And, um, they ask you questions, you know, "Oh, what's the assignment?" After I've explained it, I don't know how many times. So this was a situation that I had to deal with and I wanted to share that story today because I want parents and I want the community to understand how important it is that we have this cellphone policy in the district. And I thank you, thank you for implementing it.
Thank you. And the last, last public comment is Ms. Maria Bergman. Ms. Maria Berg, thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Maria Bergman. Welcome back, I hope you all had a wonderful summer. I wanted to thank you for your decision to prevent cellphone use in classrooms this year using Yonder magnetic pouches. There is near universal agreement in academia and across the political spectrum that the use of screens and social media are harming young people. Data has shown that keeping cell phones out of the classroom has a massive impact on the student's ability to learn and the teacher's ability to teach. As Director Hayfley points out in her op-ed on this issue from Sunday, Yonder has found an 83% improvement in student classroom engagement, 74% improvement in behavior, and a 65% improvement in academic performance. Other studies show equally drastic improvement, especially for the most disadvantaged students. This policy has a proven track record of working. It also shows your commitment to making difficult decisions to improve student outcomes. Instead of resting on your long record of past success, you are showing that you will be just as ambitious when it comes to improving D-11 this year. There will be bumps in the road, but so long as you keep your eye on the goal, this community will always support you. And there is overwhelming support for this policy, as seen by the fact that you all campaigned on this exact issue and won the support of this community overwhelmingly. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of public comments. Thank you for being here this evening and sharing your thoughts. The Board appreciates your feedback. If you checked the box asking a district administration to contact you, someone from administration will follow up. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, it is board member reports. Director Bankus, you are up first.
Oh, thank you. Um, I want to say welcome back to the new school, school year, that's exciting. Having attended some of the, yeah, welcome back events, I'm really pleased to say that they, um, have been elevated to a, a level of respect for the dignity of the profession in which we are all involved. As you may know, each board member has schools that they will be attending throughout the year and I'm so pleased, I want to, um, mention that I'm going to Henry, Halbert, McCullough, Midland, Spark Online, Russell, Community Prep, and Doherty, and I'm excited to be in your campuses. I'm excited to see the things that are going on and I want to wish all of you, students, teachers, families, and the community, a successful year, because working together is what makes us great. Thank you.
Director Chukens.
Did you get my message? About my HDMI cable in a moment, I'll let you know. Is that all right? Uh, I'd like to start off with a quote from the author Jonathan Haidt. "The diffusion of digital technology into children's lives has been like smoke pouring into our homes. We all see that something strange is happening, but we-" We all see that something strange is happening, but we don't understand it. We fear that the smoke is having bad effects on our children, but when we look around, nobody's doing much about it. Well, the smoke alarm is going off and at full volume. It's a wake-up call like no other. I fear we will look back someday in horror at what we took away from our children when we introduced smart devices to them too early. The thought makes me queasy. Renormalizing childhood independence requires collective action, and collective action is most easily facilitated by local schools and their school boards, so we're doing just that." I and most of my fellow board members have read The Anxious Generation by Jonathan Haidt this summer, which presents the most comprehensive, data-backed, and up-to-date argument for the fact that the introduction of smartphones and all associated digital media between 2010 and 2015, the height of when I was teaching, is to blame for children spiking rates of anxiety, sociogenic illnesses, which I didn't even know was a thing, depression, self-harm, and the worst of all, suicide, which he describes as a surge in suffering. Dr. Rosen, which was quoted from a public comment earlier from California State University, has his own book where he talks about the term "I-disorders," everything that is included there with addiction to technology. "As a result of this data and in collaboration with our informed Board, we're making great strides to restore authenticity to the classroom and to protect our students' childhood and youthhood while they're at school. We can only hope our parents and community will join us in this endeavor." And then, Melissa, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen, my screen.
We don't know what number you are.
Oh, you're like pinging through them. There we go. Yeah, just a couple graphs. And this is the data that we looked at as a board, and I just wanted to share, there's, he has 26 pages of resources, but I just really wanted to share this with you. Every graph you're going to see is, has a gray band, which is the introduction and implementation of smart devices in our homes with our children. And so, he talks a lot about, this is, I mean, just the data behind it. So, in that gray band, you can see daily time with friends is decreasing among our children and has such subsequently, that was before the COVID pandemic, by the way. Satisfied with oneself, you can see a drastic decrease in, in our young girls. No good there. That's the sociometer plunge, and this is from monitoring the future. Often feel lonely, again, the cause of depression, again, an increase with the use of smartphones. I often feels meaningless. So, we're getting kids into this, the area of not having a self-worth, which we as teachers are always trying to promote and teach. We're battling against technology every day, both in school and at home, every night, depending on how much technology our students are using. This is a UK study, depression by level of social media use. You can see the more our young people are on devices, the more depressed they are getting in this data poll. Suicide rates, unfortunately, spiking after the use of smartphone uptake and adoption among our youth. And lastly, this one hit me hard. In fact, I was crying when I read this book. This was one, this is a drawing from a 12-year-old girl who has been boldied and, and influenced by social media, you know, to the point of, this is what she's thinking about, and this is what she drew. So, it says, "The drawing made by Alexis Spence here, the words on our phone are worthless, die, ugly, stupid, kill yourself." So, pardon us for removing technology from the school day so that we can have children actually interact with their, with each other and with their teacher in a distracted-free environment, and, and pardon us for trying to help children remain innocent as long as they can in our schools. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. I don't see any other board member reports, so thank you. Quickly to summarize, I want to thank your team, Superintendent Gaul, for this first week. Lot of preparation went into this first week, and every event that I have attended, there's been amazing energy and momentum out there. So, I know a lot of time and effort went into this, so all the area superintendents out there and the executive cabinet team up here, too. Thank you for all your work that you put in. Moving on to consent items. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion to adopt the consent items?
I move that the Board of Education adopts all consent items as designated in the agenda. The consent items are: F2, approval of June 12, 2024, regular meeting minutes; F3, personnel recommendations, August 7, 2024; F4, approval of district-wide closure, Friday, July 5, 2024. Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Meeley?
Aye.
Director Mel Pakom?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The consent items have been...
I for me as well. I'm in the meeting now. Aye for me as well.
Okay. So, for the record, Jason, Director Jorgensen was also an aye. The ayes have it, so the consent items have been adopted as presented. Moving on to the action item, the first action item, G1. Director Carey, can you please make the motion for action item G1?
I move that the Board of Education approves this general fund contingency transfer of $304,000 for the purchase of yonder cellphone pouches.
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is new information. Superintendent Gaul, I turn it over to you.
Yeah, new information to the Board for the transfer, obviously not new information on the topic. I'll let Brandon get to the actual mechanics of what we need to have happen here. We appreciate the Board's direction and support before the summer started.
Yeah, good afternoon or good evening again, Board. As President Mel Pakom stated earlier, the purchase of yonder pouches to support our new student cellphone and personal technology device policy is coming out of a general fund contingency, and the Board must approve any general fund contingency beyond $100,000. So, we're following in alignment with that policy. I will say as a contextual note, after word of the Board's decision to implement the policy and then the purchase of yonder pouches became public, CDE did reach out to the district and say that they were going to provide us with a Esser late liquidation reimbursement opportunity of $50,000. And so, we received that grant award letter yesterday, and so, we will be reimbursing the general fund contingency of that $50,000 now that we've received that funding from CDE.
Great. So, now it's become $254,000 when it's all said and done.
It has.
Okay. Great. This is a one-time purchase, and this is not a lease?
This is a purchase. They are, they are our pouches, so no, it is not a lease. Ms. Otmer can speak through any logistics, but we purchased enough for secondary students as well as a buffer to ensure that if there are lost yonder pouches, we're ready to replace those, but no, we are not in a lease with the company.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions from the Board? Okay. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Meeley?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Meeley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Pakom?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Roth? Aye.
The ayes have it. The action item, G1, has been approved by the Board as presented. Moving on to the next action item that is on the agenda, which is the general fund contingency transfer Falcon Aero Lab. Director Roth, can you please make the action, make the motion for action item G2?
I move that the Board of Education approves the general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $250,000 for the Falcon Aero Lab contract.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Again, this is new information. Superintendent Gaul?
Dr. Comfort?
Okay.
Yeah. Again, in alignment with policy, any general fund contingency beyond, beyond $100,000 needs to be approved by the Board. This is a really exciting opportunity. As the, I'm sure the Board is aware, the fastest-growing student population post-pandemic is homeschooling students. As I'm sure the Board is also aware, the district, in the middle of the year last year, implemented a district program at Spark Online called Base Camp that struggled to take off. I'm happy to report that they do have a full class of students this year that they'll be launching. So, in the portfolio model that the Board is supporting, this relationship with Falcon Aero Lab will expand opportunities for not currently existing D11 students in aeronautics and space and STEM. And so, just to be clear about what this is, these are students who are already participating in this Falcon Aero Lab program, who would enroll with the district. And so, we are funding the cost of 50 students upfront, but the per pupil revenue for those students, half, because you get half per pupil funding for homeschool students, will come to us after we certify our October count. So, while there is a cost, that cost will be reimbursed. Ultimately, the district will not bear cost for this program.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Director Mills?
I think my question was answered earlier with the student that was recognized tonight because they were a typical student, I don't know what you would call it, not a homeschooling student, but a, the Mitchell student, and he was participating in the Falcon Aero Lab, correct? My question is, can we look at potentially having access to this program for our, what would you call, our student, traditional students? That's what I'm hoping for.
So, yes, I would say that Falcon Aero Lab and our relationship with them is growing. This is a particular transfer that we need to fund the homeschool portion of what Falcon Aero Lab's been able to bring, but what you saw today with Preston is scholarship funds coming from Falcon Aero Lab as a nonprofit for them to be able to promote aviation as a pathway for students. So, in the same way, right now that we reimburse and/or pay for concurrent enrollment opportunities for students to learn how to be electricians or welders or in the health sciences, what we've expanded now, and I want to thank Dr. Melnitzberg for bringing that MOU to our attention, we're now expanding that into the aviation pathways. And so, yes, there are multiple opportunities with Falcon Aero Lab. This particular transfer is to cover the online, I'm not, sorry, the homeschool portion that will now add to our portfolio. We're expecting about a dozen-ish or so. Fifty, 50 students. Fifty students, thank you. Yeah.
That's great. I, just thinking about homeschooling, they have more flexibility with scheduling, and so, didn't know if our traditional students, we could work schedules for them to be able to have that flexibility.
Yes.
Sounds like it's already in the works.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions. I'm glad that we are doing this. I've heard of other surrounding school districts doing something similar to this. I'm glad that we are jumping into this and taking advantage of this opportunity. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Hayfley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Pakom?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Roth?
Aye.
Okay. All seven board members voted, so with that, the ayes have it, and this contract award to Falcon Aero Lab has been approved by the Board. Director Hayfley, can you please make the motion for action item G3?
Sure. I move that the Board of Education approves contract C2025-0002 in the amount of $779,059.80 to Phoenix Therapies LLC for athletic trainer services within the district's athletic department. This period of performance is July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Gaul?
Chief Odom and Mr. Knoll.
Thank you, Superintendent Gaul. Good evening, Board of Education. Welcome back. I hope you had a wonderful summer and a relaxing break. Before I turn it over to Mr. Knoll to give an overview of what this contract is really going to be providing for our students, I would like to introduce and recognize, from Phoenix Therapies, doing business as Colorado Institute of Sports Medicine, or SISM, you might hear that term, is Lorne and Beth McDonald. Thank you so much for coming tonight. I will provide an overview of the procurement process on the contract after Mr. Knoll does his presentation. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chris.
Good evening, Board, and welcome back. Our tagline in the District 11 Athletic Department is "Exceptional Opportunities for All Students." The contract that is in front of you will continue to provide exceptional opportunities for all of our students. Six to eight years ago, the landscape of the profession of being a certified athletic trainer was evolving as the industry started to require professionals to hold a master's degree before they could sit for their National Board exam. The private sector kept up with this changing requirements, but K-12 education did not in terms of having athletic trainers in the building. The salary for working in the private sector rose significantly, due in large part to K-12 athletic trainers were not working year-round. In August of '22, which is two years ago, all four traditional high schools had a certified athletic trainer on staff, and that trainer was a District 11 employee. Two months later, between September and October, we lost one of our trainers to UCCS. We lost another trainer to UC Health, and then we lost one to the U.S. Olympic Committee, where she is currently serving in Paris as an assistant and will be the lead trainer in Paris at the end of the month with the U.S. Paralympic Team. We posted those jobs immediately, and for multiple months, we didn't receive one applicant. An emergency contract with UC Health provided us immediate coverage. Coverage was adequate, but not phenomenal, and they covered the District 11 schools with trainers that were already assigned to other schools within our region. At the end of the school year, while the jobs were still being posted, our jobs were still being posted, UC Health told us they no longer could provide coverage for the 23-24 school year. For that school year, our procurement department did exactly what they did, went out and provided us some opportunities, and they secured a contract with two different organizations to provide coverage for the three schools that did not have a trainer on staff. The contract in front of you would provide full-time athletic trainer coverage at all four traditional high schools for both practices and games. It would also provide athletic trainer coverage for all of our culminating middle school athletic events, and this would fix the problem that we have struggled with for two years, and this would fix the problem permanently. We are not the only school district that is dealing with this issue, as many of the school districts along the front range have outsourced their athletic trainer services. Why is full-time athletic trainer coverage important? First, prevention, which we think is a big deal. Trainers help design injury prevention programs for our student athletes and education that will help support to both our student athletes as well as their parents. It also provides immediate care and treatment. Trainers provide immediate care to our student athletes to include up-to-date training on diagnosing potential concussions and proper return-to-play protocols for kids that do have concussions. Rehabilitation and recovery. Athletic trainers assist with rehabilitation by designing and supervising recovery programs tailored to each athlete's needs. This includes working with school nurses to build educational plans to support student athletes that have been diagnosed with concussions. Concussions pull kids out of school from time to time, and our trainers work with our nurses to figure out how best to serve our kids with educational plans. One that, that I was excited for before today, but then after we went to Ed Robson today, is education. Athletic trainers will assist and work with student trainers to help develop their interest in having a career as an athletic trainer. We are bringing student trainers back into our training room. We have lost that over the last two years because we didn't have stable athletic trainers. As Mr. Gaul and his team described today, it's about experiences for our kids. This will give our kids experiences and potential career pathways. Before I turn it back over to Ms. Odom, if this contract is approved with, if this contract is approved, SISM has employees already hired for each high school, and it will be an annual cost avoidance by going from in-house coverage to outsourcing the service. We worked through Dr. Comfort's office to freeze the four FTE positions to use those dollars to support this outsourced need. So, in short, this has a budget-neutral outcome. Thank you, Board.
Okay. I don't know why I struggle with this. I'm somewhat trainable. Thank you so much. We appreciate what you do. So, we issued a RFP under competitive procedures. The best value trade-off that I'd like to highlight is, for this particular project, is strong demonstrated track performance in student preventative care. The student trainers will have an opportunity for potential career opportunities, and there was a high confidence in their ability to successfully implement training and physical therapy programs for our students. The contract is for a three-year term. Our standard terms and conditions are employed in this. And, next slide. Mr. Knoll covered the desired outcomes in his overview, as well as the strategies that we're going to employ under this contract. I would like to highlight, though, a couple of the return on investments that we anticipate. All the traditional high schools will be staffed with athletic... All the traditional high schools will be staffed with athletic trainers. There is a commitment to support preventative care, and there is an awareness to potential career opportunities for our students. This does represent a potential growth in our community engagement. This concludes my overview of the solicitation process, the contract, the return on investment, and the value that this team brings to the table and our students. At this time, I turn it back over to the Board for any questions you might have for this group.
Thank you. Dr. Bankus.
Thank you. It was really a, excuse me, a comprehensive explanation. Until I get to grow staff collaboration, I'm not sure what that means.
Do you want to?
In terms of staff collaboration, what our goal, what our goal is, is in terms of those student trainers. We're hoping that ultimately, we will see those student trainers show that interest, and we have already talked with Dwayne Roberson and his group to potentially start sliding those kids into that career pathway. Yes, ma'am?
Seeing no further questions from the Board, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye. The ayes have it. The action agenda item for the athletic trainer services has been approved by the Board. And thank you for being here, too. We look forward to this partnership.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Director Jorgensen, can you please make the motion for action item G4?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approves this general fund contingency transfer in the amount of $211,388 to support the purchase of two White Fleet school buses.
Second.
Moved and seconded, again, this is new information, Superintendent Gall.
Yeah, again, new information on the transfer, old information on the White Activity Buses, so if Dr. Comfort can cover that need.
Yeah, good evening again, Board. If the Board remembers, in the '22-'23 school year, the district assembled a vacancy fund task force, and through that process, a number of initiatives were identified on how to spend some contingency money that had developed over time. One of those items was White Fleet purchasing, and so, we opened a PO in that school year. As the Board has also heard, there are significant delays in the delivery of transportation vehicles. So, that project was open in '22-'23. We kept that PO open all of '23-'24. We had to close it in the transition of the fiscal year on July 1, and then the buses showed up about three days later. And so, that funding had transitioned to the general fund contingency, and so, now we're reallocating back to that original purpose of the vacancy fund balance.
Thank you. Looking to the Board to see if there are any questions. Director Nelson.
Were there only two in that fund balance, or we're still waiting?
There are more, and so, we will likely come back to the Board when those are delivered. I didn't want to come for a larger purchase when we're still not certain when the others will get delivered, so we will likely come back in front of the Board when we have a couple of more vehicles and do this again.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Director Ott.
Thank you. Are there any opportunities to make these electrical vehicles and pay for them with the grants that are coming through at the state and maybe federal level for electric school buses?
I would check with Chief Odom on the contract specifics.
Thank you, Chief Comfort. We have done some research on the electric buses. There's a huge amount of infrastructure that we don't have to support it, and the cost to replace the batteries is extremely expensive. We're still waiting to see how the functionality and the life expectancy. Batteries, I think, were supposed to last four years, but we have had some neighboring districts that did buy electric buses, and the batteries are like $100,000, and they didn't last the full term, so then it becomes a debate of who pays to replace it. So, we had wanted to wait for that to get a little more solidified before we invest in that, to answer your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'll jump in to say, we're happy, maybe after the New Year, to take a look at recapitalization costs for the Yellow Bus fleet. The two white bus activities that are two of eight is not the place where we'll see the return on investment to make that type of a shift, especially in electric vehicles. They have either gone very big, which is Yellow Bus, or very small in really just, you know, personal Teslas or some of the other four to six-passenger vehicles. These are these very traditional, were they 10, 12 packs?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, which, that's not been a market that alternative power vehicles have really tackled, but if the Board would like us to, we're happy to take, after the New Year, a look at a recapitalization effort on Yellow Buses. We'll wait for further direction of the Board on that.
Thank you. Director Ott, are you good? Okay, thank you. So, to recap, two of eight, that's what the number has been delivered, and then we are waiting for six more?
That's correct. I believe there might be two more very soon.
Okay, great, and you may be back.
We know we have two.
Okay, thanks. It's better than none, I guess. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Malpacken?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director Ott?
Aye. The ayes have it. The general fund contingency transfer to support the purchase of two White Fleet school buses has been approved by the Board. Moving to the next action agenda item, Director Nelson, can you please make the motion for action item G5?
I move that the Board of Education approves Contract C 2025-0010 to Converge One Inc. in the amount of $1,925,874.24 for the installation and support of a new district-wide Cisco collaboration system. The period of performance for this effort is July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2030.
Second.
Was it seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Moved and seconded, again, new information, Superintendent Gall.
Before I call the team up, I want to acknowledge that Rosa Garcia would be presenting many of these contracts. She's a little ill with the COVID, which has made a pretty clean sweep across the city here in the last couple of weeks, so I want to acknowledge the work that she's done to get these contracts ready, to Chief Odom and to Mr. Hunt and his team.
Thank you again. Before I turn it over to Mr. Hunt to give an overview of the technical functionality of this replacement system, I do want to acknowledge in the room, Ms. Kathy New is what we call our contracting officer technical rep, like Mr. Knoll was, and then the contracting officer was Mr. Adrian Williams. Once Mr. Hunt finishes his technical overview, I'll give a highlight overview of the contract and the evaluation process. Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Chief Odom, and thank you, Board. I think most of us are familiar with our WebEx infrastructure. It pretty much permeates all the work that we do. It encompasses our calling, our messaging, our meetings, hosts our sessions like this board session, for instance, and it's in many of our conference rooms, and all of our schools, all of our staff have access to it. Our students also use it, so we have a widespread use of WebEx in the district. It's critical functionality. Just some examples of some sites that use it extensively would be Spark, right? Spark, with their online program, uses WebEx on a daily basis to conduct most of their learning and teaching. Other schools like Achieve, and other schools in the district have access to it, and use it on an as-needed basis. Our high schools have mobile WebEx workstations that they can use to record classroom sessions and even broadcast those sessions to other schools. So, for instance, if there's a specific school with a teacher with a certain skillset that's teaching a certain course that maybe another high school doesn't have, that lesson, that whole course can be shared through this WebEx platform with another high school or multiple schools. This WebEx functionality also permeates many other instructional applications, our Schoology platform, our learning management system, Microsoft Teams, and it's embedded in other applications as well. So, pretty widespread use across the district, and not to mention just the daily use by staff, right, and the daily work that they do. Just to give you a little background on this WebEx, we started the Cisco WebEx project back in 2019. At that time, there was a $2 million contract roughly that was used to purchase hardware, software, and licensing for this Cisco infrastructure. That was a five-year contract. That contract has expired, and not only has that contract expired, but the support that that system was providing is going to be out of software maintenance on the 1st of August, which basically means we're going to have to either replace all of our hardware or upgrade the software and the licensing and the support, which is what we're doing with this effort. It's really critical that we do this at this time, and in addition to moving to a more stable, supported platform, we're going to move from a system that has on-premise servers, routers, and other hardware to support this system to a cloud infrastructure. And there's many benefits moving this to the cloud, both with security, performance, even situations like, you may recall a while back where we had that windstorm, and it took down a lot of our power lines and took basically the district down for a period of time. That won't happen because our physical servers were affected by that. Systems in the cloud would not be, as long as there's an internet connection. So, there's a lot of advantages to this new effort. Part of that $2 million initial purchase included the software, so we have hardware that goes with the system, and we have software. So, a good chunk of that money, about $1.2 million, was devoted to software. We soon discovered in 2019 that we didn't have all the software tools necessary to pull that off, so we had to add another three pieces of software to get that to work. That brought that total cost of that initial software to about $1.26 million, which comes out to be roughly about $252,000 a year over that five-year contract life, right, just to frame this kind of funding from the past into the funding that we're going to talk about for this new project. And the new project really consists of, the first year, we broke this into a one-year phase to get us started down this path, and then another five-year extension of that contract, so really, six years total. So, the $1.9 million that you're seeing for this effort is spread out over those six years. That comes out to be roughly, you know, $300 and some thousand dollars. Well, we are going to basically, because we have other functionality and new tools, some of those appliances that we had to purchase to make this work before, we will no longer need them. So, the total annual cost of the new system drops from that $300 and some thousand dollars to the $312,000 mark on a six-year basis. So, $252, five years ago, $312,000 moving forward. Little bit of a change in the price there, but really, we're going to frame that in terms of kind of what vendors normally do. Had we started with $252 back in 2019 and applied the normal 5% to 8% uplift that vendors normally apply, we'd be looking at $340,000 or so spending on that six-year contract. So, that's kind of, that's the frame. Everything's gone up a little bit in price, and vendors do the same thing that we see with our other expenses. So, that's where we're at with this project. So, like I said, we're moving to the cloud, which has many advantages. One of those advantages, we can reduce our dependence on our infrastructure, our hardware, and we can also reduce the maintenance that we have to provide for that hardware. So, there's some return on our investment in the sense that we don't have to buy new hardware to support this effort. We're also moving to the cloud, and that gives us extra functionality. For instance, one of those key pieces of functionality is that there's a new 9/11 law that says basically, when you're using these WebEx tools or phone calling, et cetera, that it needs to have a location for devices for systems that are on-premise and for devices that are off-premise. That off-premise location for 9/11 calls is very difficult to provide before this. This new system will do that very easily, so it's baked into the system. So, we've got some new functionality, some advantages with this new system. That in a nutshell is kind of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and a little bit of the history and where we're at today.
Thank you. Ms. Odom?
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. So, we had a competitive process. We evaluated the requirements under qualifications, certifications, background partnerships, past performance, and pricing. Some of the trade-offs are listed up here. Mr. Hunt has identified some of the key where we are not going to have to replace equipment. We're going to reduce programming requirements with improved automation. An overview of the contract, as Mr. Hunt identified, it's six years. The first year is that migration period, go into the cloud. The last five years will be the service from the cloud. All of our standard terms and conditions are in this contract. Mr. Hunt also identified the desired outcomes and the strategies getting through the first year. We will have continued staff training on some of these new functions. And then, the return on investment. I'm not going to reiterate what Mr. Hunt identified, but this is going to bring to us some added features to expedite staff efficiencies and provide services to our families, so that is one of the key return on investments. At this time, I will turn it back over to the Board for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you for both your presentations. Director Bankus?
I wanted to ask, when we're talking about training, is it going to be a rollout, starting with schools, or how is that training going to be put into schools, especially for new folks?
That's a great question. Mr. Hunt, would you like to?
I'm going to bring up our Network Communications Administrator, Kathy New, because she's got the training plan.
Oh, I hadn't had a chance to say hi to Kathy. Hi, Kathy.
Hi. So, the benefit of this is, for the most part, for the end users, there's no change.
I can't hear you.
For the most part, the end users won't know any difference.
Oh, okay.
Most of the functionality will stay the same. Their desk phones stay the same, everything stays the same. We're really adding additional functionality for them, so that's the big benefit. Training is always available. I offer that on a, you call me, I also offer it if you want it at the school, we'll come to you. I don't offer it on a schedule, because when I offer it on a schedule, I don't get as big a turnout as when they ask me and they schedule it, so that's more of how I handle it.
How will they know that they need more training with the new functionality?
I repeatedly send out communication that this is what's happening, we've got new functionality. When we put the equipment here in the boardroom, in the garden-level conference room, I sent an email out to all staff, letting them know it was here, and that we would offer, in that case, we had two trainings, and I've also done individual training since then.
And I want to thank you for the improvement in the audio. It's much better. Thank you.
Well, that was a team effort. We had quite a few people helping, so thank you.
Share my gratitude.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. Director Nelson?
So, the 357 number, is that currently in this year's budget, and then I assume future years will put that in the budget? Your Dr. Comfort's coming.
He's like Florence asking questions about money. I just know it.
I predicted that question was coming. Yeah, so that is.
I did send it an email.
Yeah, that is in this year's budget. That's why there's no budget request associated with this contract. The IT department has a mix of MLO supports as well as general funds that they are using for this effort.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Real quick on the survivability on that last slide, what does that mean? Ensure local school survive, ensure local survivability of phone services for all schools and that desired outcomes?
Okay, so, at each school, they have a router, so if the network goes down between us and them, their phones stay up. They still can still dial 911 if they need to. The front office actually has the ability to make and receive phone calls for their main number, in addition to outbound calls. We use some backup phone lines for those, so that's the local survivability. They are routers that will continue to stay there. If power actually goes out, they actually, in addition, have a white emergency phone in the front office. They pull it out, it's locked in the principal's office, they pull it out, put it out, and we forward phone calls to that number. We try to make sure that at all times, our schools have phone services.
That's awesome. That's awesome. I'm glad I asked that question. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director O?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the contract action item, G five contract about the Cisco collaboration system, has been approved by the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this was the item that was moved from, the next item on the agenda is the item that was moved from non-action to action earlier this evening. Director Bankus, can you please make the motion for action item G six?
I move that the Board of Education approves resolution G five dash O two, updated student fees, fines and charges for our school year 2024, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Superintendent Call.
Yeah, if I could get Ms. Colback and Ms. Otmer to come forward, we have two items we need to update the Board on. One, replacement costs for yonder pouches, and two, a change in our after-school pricing as we expand some of those programs.
Good evening, Board. I can be very brief on the cell phone pouch fee, fine, excuse me. This would be an addition to the student fines that you approved last spring and would allow us a mechanism to charge families when a pouch is lost or intentionally destroyed or damaged. And the replacement cost is $30.
That cost was updated in JQE one in district-wide fees, so that's where you'll find that one. The second one was the elementary after-school care program. You know that we've been funding that through ESSR dollars. As they sunset, you approved fund balance task force funds to keep that after-school programming going. We just need to initiate an $11 fee per week per child to continue that programming across the district. When we did approve it originally, we said a small nominal fee will be applied as needed. It's now come to that time. We did market analysis. Usually that programming can cost anywhere from $25 to $40 a week. So the $11 fee is still at a significant discount, offset by that ta, that fund balance task force.
And I appreciate the team getting that to 11. They started a little higher, and I said, let's make it 11, since we're District 11. So that seems like the right way to partner with our families for after-school care.
Absolutely.
Director Nelson?
Can you remind me how many schools we have that programming in?
Yeah, I'll go through them. So internal programming that we're keeping in D 11 right now will happen at King, West, Trailblazer, Audubon, Midland and Monroe. We did also start to offset and augment with another after-school provider, who can do that at the same cost for D 11, so that's awesome. There is self-pay happening for that at Keller, but then District, as well as Adams, Queen Palmer, Twain, McCullough, Fremont and Rogers. And what that means is they're providing the service with their employees, meaning that our principals at those sites can focus on their first and foremost instructional practices, the ABC policies, and that provider can come in and provide high-quality after-school care and programming that aligns to the school needs. They've been partnering with every single principal, saying, how do you want your program customized to support reading and academics as well as play in that after-school care program?
And they're also at the $11? Was that?
Yes.
They just agreed to that?
Yeah, and it is offset by things like CCAP, so we'll encourage families to apply for that who are eligible so that we're also able to extend that funding as long as possible.
Awesome. Thank you.
Director O?
Thank you. So if a student loses or their, loses their yonder pouch, or it's taken, or, you know, I can just imagine all kinds of scenarios where that goes missing, and we require that for their phone. Obviously, the, the option is just to leave the phone at home, but are there any considerations for students who cannot afford a second pouch? But maybe their phone for a job or something?
This is the, gives us the ability to charge families. So in the same way that I promise you, a lost card might not happen exactly the same in every situation at every school, we have overbought pouches, particularly in the early part of this implementation, such that this is not seen as a revenue offset or a penalty as we try and make this transition. So we're going to give our school leaders the autonomy to be able to determine when we've gotten to what I'll just call the egregious decision to not abide by a policy or a regulation and not make this the, eh, here, you owe us $30 because it's a Tuesday and you forgot your yonder pouch. And so that's, we're going to stand in kind of that gray area. The change to the regulation is to give us the authority now to add it to a list of a potential fee when warranted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions. Roll call, please.
Director Bankus?
Aye.
Director Carey?
Aye.
Director Haley?
Aye.
Director Jorgensen?
Aye.
Director Mel Packham?
Aye.
Director Nelson?
Aye.
Director O?
The ayes have it, the item G six, which is the updated resolution, student fees, fines and charges, has been approved by the board. Moving on to the non-action item. So this is, the one non-action item is authorized district staff legislative liaisons. So Superintendent Call?
Dr. Comfort? Good evening again, Board. Just some housekeeping here. As I'm sure the Board knows, policy BJA requires that on a yearly basis, the Board approve a list of employees that may represent the district in legislative matters. And so we bring to you that list for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Is the Board comfortable moving this to consent? Okay, thank you. Okay, this item will move to consent at the next board meeting. Okay. We are at the end of non-action agenda item, future agenda item tasks, request, board. Okay, I don't see any. So moving on to the calendar review. We have Wednesday, August 14th, 2024. That's next Wednesday, a work session, followed by potentially a special meeting at that time. The topic of discussion on the agenda is the Palmer Design RFP contract. Wednesday, August 21st would be a work session. There is multiple agenda items. It has been, it has not been finalized yet. And Wednesday, August 28th, which would be the last board meeting, we tentatively have the board retreat scheduled for that evening. Okay, that's the summary on that. Seeing no further business. Okay, we have some questions. Director Bankus?
Yes, do you have times for August 14th, 21 and 28? Time?
Oh, time. August 14th, we will start the work session at four o'clock, as we normally do, followed by a special meeting. Okay, I'm not sure how much time allocations would be for the work session and the special meeting.
And then the same thing for the 21st, four o'clock?
Yes. August 21st, we'll start at four o'clock.
Okay.
And I, right now, August 28th, the board retreat, is it scheduled to start at four o'clock, or when do we have the board retreat? Oh, okay. Okay. So if we need additional time for the board retreat, is the board open for that conversation? So either Director Haley or I will circle back with you, and you can let us know if we can move the board retreat a little bit earlier in the afternoon to three o'clock if we need a significant amount of time to cover the agenda items that evening. So keep that in mind while we put together the agenda, if we think we need more than the, usually three and a half hours, three hours, 45 minutes, we'll have to clean up. If we need more than that, we'll circle back with you and let you know. Director Bankus, are we done?
Yeah.
Aydena?
Oh, sorry.
Great, thank you. Director Nelson?
I won't be able to participate in the August 21st meeting, and I know we also have some work with DAC charges and norms and for committees and that kind of thing that I was helping with. And so just wanting to ask that we not do that on that evening. And for Director Mel Packham and Haley, that you keep that in mind as you're figuring out agendas in the coming weeks.
Okay, yeah. Maybe we can move that up if necessary to the August 14th meeting to add it to that work session.
Okay, just let me know so I make sure we're tight on what we're doing by then.
This, you know.
By Friday.
Yeah. And then, yeah, tomorrow is when we meet with Superintendent Call and his team to figure out the agenda. It's either have to come on August 14th or it has to come on the August 28th then. Thank you for that feedback. Seeing no further business, if there are no objections, this meeting will officially adjourned at 8:20 PM. Yeah, and you took a.